We're just here in special meeting to leave. Uh, so just to be clear, the special meeting was called. Uh, I'm calling this meeting to order at six forty-five. Again, we're sorry for the delay. Um, this meeting was called today uh for the Gen I development. Here's for our bylaws and had to be the week prior to uh the special meeting date. Uh, which is today, June twenty-fifth. Uh, as a part of that, we reviewed the bylaws just for roll call purposes. And because it's a special meeting, not a normally scheduled meeting, we will do one roll call. And with general, um, the bylaws require two roll calls to the general board meetings. Uh, and so we will do one roll call prior to the voting item. So it's actually voting, right? But we're going to jump right into the actual agenda, which is the presentation of all voting items that we're actively to consider. On the special meeting, our request was, uh, it said committee, uh, committee items that were through throughout the month of June. It had that we would also have the election of the Assistant Secretary and First Vice Chairperson of Community War Ten. Uh, we'd have a vote for a power of executive uh for the committee this summer. And the bylaws resolution, which we've already voted on bylaws. This is just a, a resolution that we are kind of applying to make sure that we solidify everything. Okay? Any questions or concerns? Any outrunning us to be judged? Okay. So we will begin now with the committees for events that we, um. Okay, we're gonna start with the votes of the committee actions. All votes will take place after they're presented. This is not committee reports. So committee chairs, you're only presenting your voting items. This is not a general board meeting, so that we're mindful of how we're just presenting the voting items. We'll start with economic development and I'll chair.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Nicole Harris. I am the Chair of the United Development Technology and Communication Committee. Tonight, we have several voting items. First is the letter of support for the bike cafe business day. Um, we do not have that letter of support right now. Um, the general sentiment of the letter of support is that this bike cafe is, he's come to the board. Would you say like almost a year now about about?
About a few months. He's coming about twice.
Yes, so at least. At least about six or seven months. He's come to talk to the Department of Development Committee about starting bike cafes across Harlem. And even getting um five to five central parks, which we've talked about. That is another type of licensing thing. Uh, so we could really apply them on those type of things. But um, it would start out as like little coffee shops, mobile coffee shops. And he's just wanted a letter of support, not that we have to do anything of an action item, but that we are supporting his entrepreneurial spirit. Um, so he, so over the past couple of months, we've asked him to lay out his plan. We've asked him to come back and just talk about how he plans to, one, get these little bikes and the little carts. How he plans to kind of franchise it out. So over the past, like a six or seven month, I mean, I don't think before I was. Um, he's finally got it together and came with a full business plan to talk about a bike cafe. Yes, and we're all, we're all nine because over several months, he has come several, I'm like several eight times to talk to us. So he's been dedicated about making sure that we understood his business plan. So now he's at the point where he is ready to, to launch. Again, there is no real ask of us. It's just that we as a community would support him and the bike cafe. Bailey, did you have any man?
There was one, oh, they might have used. Just one time. So he did propose twenty-five locations and three of them are in our district. I think the rest are in um, uh, C G nine and C E.
And he's presented to them as well.
Yes, yeah, well, yes, yeah, but um, now he's going like after each of our support.
Yeah. So we were kind of like the testing round to all of his comments, yes. So, uh, so that's the letter of support. Um, I can give you some verbiage to that. Mina, could we also send that out? We're voting on the sentiment tonight, but I can send that out and the full board can ratify that. Is that okay, Chair or?
Many good though.
We did, uh, we voted to pass it. Yes, okay, so I will make sure that the meeting has that information and is able to go on that sentence. Is there, is anybody a question about that? If I see.
No, does this bike cafe affect parking?
So no, um, it does not. So it's, it's gonna be like sidewalk. It's like a little, it really is a bike with a little trailer on the back.
Oh, okay.
That's what it is. Um, so it's a, like a fun, like a bigger bike with a trailer. Definitely. So they're gonna be portable and go in and out. So they'll be portable and you'll be able to move them about.
Okay.
And now all this is doing the fault and you're fault is that?
Yeah. Just pictures of them.
Okay.
In the electronic folder? Yeah, or true. Anyone have any questions about that?
Sorry, but you guys discussed in your seven meetings locating not near other existing cafe establishments that pay rent and property patterns?
I don't think we, we discussed that. I think the area is that we did come up with, when I, when I remember looking at them, there were existing other bike cafes around.
One of them, one twenty-six by the State Office Building. You have Harlem Cafe, I actually lost no worry. One is out behind the Apollo, I guess. Alright, just we're voting on it.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't really bring that up, but when we looked at it, there were no other kind of like entrepreneurial like direction. Um, and I do see Shanna, well, Shanna's on here, the Vice Chair. She was actually at this meeting. I just watched it on the Facebook, but if she has anything to add, she can hop into. Um, the next one is our labor deals. Um, one more is Delian Broachery. Um, the Liberty Soul was beer and wine. Um, this passed in committee. Um, and they, uh, they, did you have any issues with this, Lashanna? I didn't see any, but they did pass in committee. Okay, and you can see it's located at twenty-seven eighty-seven Frederick Dennis Field. Um, and then the Culture Bakery LLC, that was a new application for wine, beer and cider to be located at twenty-one eighteen Frederick Dennis Boulevard. Um, this did pass in committee. Um, was there anything that, uh, to add, Lashanna? But again. But this passed with no issues. And then, um, we had the Ruth Cafe that was liquor, wine, beer and cider. And that was located at two-two-six West One Forty Fifth Street. Um, this passed, but it needed to have additional petitions. Mina, we did verify those petitions today, correct, that they were submitted as passed by committee. Um, do, and I think they're in the folder, right? Alright, so that was, it happened, voted on, and we need a contingent on these additional petitions. That actually displayed the address and the names of folks that are in that area. So, uh, that did have, you know, maybe contingent upon those petitions. And then lastly, we have the Office of Cannabis Management of B N, Matt in New York's LLC. Um, this did not pass in committee. Um, we had discussions about this because, one, um, there were no petitions that actually had addresses of a community. Um, and then we asked for them to provide that. We actually provided the, the company or the business additional petitions that kind of fit our criteria. That was last week, last Wednesday. We have not received those as of yet. So at this time, I mean, there should be a choice, or a public would move on this. Uh, this did not pass in that we did not receive the proper documentation for the establish. And we still do not have that.
So we still, no, or was it voted just not?
Right, it's voted to pass here, so we voted on here, intended that they actually have the documents and the petitions, which they do not have. We do not have those. Alright, does anyone have any questions about that?
They've been, yes, they've, they've presented to the committee. They had an application, the application was then complete. The signature that they had, and now in Congress, any addresses, not as the businesses around it, because the application said that all of this, if, are they aware? And did they say that they're going to them in September or?
No, they said they were gonna send us the, um, fine petitions for this meeting, that we have them and be able to vote on it properly in this meeting. We have not completed them yet.
The O C M.
The O C M.
And we asked them, uh, no, we. I have my notes recorded now.
Right, but it's intended upon the petition. That's why.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
You voted no contingent upon petition?
Yes, but I'm sorry, let me make sure that I have a video. Uh, well, Shannon, you have anything to add to this? Uh, I apologize for any confusion. I was out of town and looked at the video.
Excuse me, yes, upon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Does any committee members remember? The committee members?
They was, they was supposed to provide those documentation before we get to this particular meeting. So that it can be voted on.
Okay, but there was no decision really made because they had everything completely.
They didn't have it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone had a deadline due twenty-third. So Monday.
Got you.
And I believe you did reach out to them and they still haven't come by.
Yeah.
Still have names and.
Right, and we asked them specifically for addresses that related to.
If there's no objection, I would, we would strike this from the agenda theme that the committee, so we can just move forward.
Yeah, okay, it's not right.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, is there any questions about any of the other voting items? Alright, thank you.
We'll continue with Parks and Recreation, uh, Dr. Franklin, and I know they have voters and resolutions.
Thank you, Chair. Here are you more members. We have, uh, one, I get a phone call before you and then all of the emails. So we're sort of, um, uh, Steve Charter. In the letter, um, uh, New York District President of New York City, part of twenty-eight specifically, we've written a letter to the Borough President that looking for, um. Um, well, the Department of City Planning can open to the boundaries, uh, when you're more in. Um, you've seen the map, we just wanna give a little bit of recognition, we should both be in the map to see that, um, this part in the north, um, Yunga Park, Martha Corby Park, St. Meadows Park. Are all of their, even the home there, all drawn out of people in. They're not in community work yet, they're on the boundaries, including the former River Park, I mean, uh, I mean, very good, through Door Number One Forty-Fifth. So, first off, they might committed, so we've kind of been exploring this over the last, we've, uh, met with, uh, uh, Attorney for our residents. I've talked to members of twenty-four, nine, ten, eleven, I've talked to, um, Manhattan, Michigan Forests, who's looked at that online, online. Uh, because the missing one I mentioned first, you can see the movement, I mean, that we've got, I mean, the interesting thing, I turned my slide back, which is all, so. So I think this, um, you know, I think your chair is also, has expressed this as well. So I want to get before you, uh, there's a sort of a sweep of the letters, um, requesting a review of the Manhattan Borough President, a review of the, and in board collaboration with the Parks, uh, Parks as a summary. Uh, we are requesting a formal review of the Department of City Planning, which went to the Charter, uh, of the boundaries. We're, uh, requesting authorization to initiate formal collaboration with any board in the eyes of the Department of Arts and City Parks. And we're also, um, submitting a letter to the Borough President Department of, uh, City Planning, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation and to the Brooklyn City Council members of, uh, the nine, ten, eleven regarding, uh, formal collaboration. Um, and so we're expecting, uh, we're bringing the courts ahead to the floor, we have the full, our full committee of all we want is a favor of this. So we're requesting from the committee to adopt the resolution, uh, for this full vote submission and this resolution. Uh, the motion is resolution in question of following the community work and boundary establishing and establishing in board collaboration regarding central park potential farm rights. Committee, uh, on the Michael Morris Rachel from the afternoon, so Parks and Recreation Committee.
Thank you. Uh, public safety, we have the Chair, Larry McAllen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe everyone. Thank you guys, we're great, the last two days involved yesterday. We had a, actually an increase in number of phones that actually came out. These are only phones dependent on the legislature, so that's the, uh, image. If, if maybe look at, you let us support. Uh, what is in the folder, we'll get this again, which puts it out. Um, there will be support for the law school regarding, uh, uh, some of the public safety issues at that particular school. Uh, the parents that came and met with the committee, uh, they made a very compelling argument. And the committee decided to focus, providing with the letter of support, and that is under the, uh, the file, if we should be voting on that tonight. And the other letter is, another letter for the condition that concerns, uh, recent, uh, District Twenty-Eight, recent Twenty-Eight. If you have a hard copy of that, you also have a electronic copy of that. And, um, the committee vote to approve that, but the committee also wanted more input into the letter. Um, and, uh, they thought that the strong, the Chair could provide more guidance with regards to that, in terms of this particular.
It's a recent event.
They, they, but they want to get input. But they want to get more with.
Okay.
In fact, some members of Congress, I had emailed them, but they, unfortunately, I ran out, but that's, that's why.
Okay. Alright, so if, so just to be clear, I, uh, the letter from the Department of Civic Management, uh, which you now, I think members should have a copy. Um, everyone have a copy?
Yes.
So, uh, that was, it was brought to committee last month, and then, um, there was a need to have. It was just, at that time, the letter was focused more on the needs of the twenty-three cent, and there was discussion about adding, did I have discussion about community too? And how we, how, how we released and so on and so forth. So, um, it was edited, but, um, what was really supposed to happen is also that members put some input into it. So is, am I seeing, hearing that there's still a need for more input? Is that what, is that what's been?
I, I think we spoke about, and maybe it wasn't committed, clearly is that we wanted the letter to go out as the, um, the bylaws day. Where we can see it and then put our pounds on the side, as opposed just to sending, uh, uh, information to the Chair. So I, I thought that was the end result. Apparently, that wasn't the end result. So he was actually waiting for an email. Never came.
Okay.
Yes, but this was first brought to the committee, um, to discuss after the issues were not in the board, just to, uh, the word version and.
You said, you said Joe knows. Joe brought some, yes, he's helping me, he's helping me, and he's paying. Those are tall. He knows.
So I know probably not to push you too hard. So whatever, that, that's him, a lot, you know, now, worse because he.
No, he knows who you are.
Oh, okay.
He don't know who you are. He's still anonymous. Okay, so he, but you got, but, but he fuck with you, you know, he came in with this last group, and he knowing that the lawyer. And that is all with us. And so.
It's us. Okay.
So we're supposed to separate out this letter because it was, we've clear the intent of the letter was to, one, get C D ten in front of Commissioner Tish. And then also raise the concerns, um, that twenty-three recent had with their resources. So this should have been two letters, but we also, during rings point, weren't given the opportunity to edit it. So this has been presented again, I'm not sure that the differences between the first one, if any. Okay, so just because, so let me tell you, I, I mean, I, I wanted to take action prior to the summit, as we were saying. Um, I give forward to you all, because I only took the lead because I just wanted to start, I wanted to come into, um, so let's, what I wanted to, I, because we're, we're gonna lose, we don't want to wait till September to do that. So, uh, you know, the point of this, what happens is when people start counting them on letters, I'm finding that who's going to take the lead from the committee to coordinate? I did already, and I'm putting in your hand. So can I do that? I told them, okay, so I'm gonna, I'll turn it over to you, and then we can figure out if the board will allow still, um, kind of, yeah, um, I'm sorry, wait, there was one here before, sorry, yes. And that's.
I'm just a little weird to, um, get the letter, get more. Um, I'm just gonna wait until, um, we get the letter and get to add more input. Because I had, uh, concerns about the additional fifteen officers, um, what are they gonna look like? Um, also, you know, there's always deployment issues, you know, I, I'm. I'm concerned about particular areas living like they're under occupation. Right, um, and, you know, the additional cars and cameras. I'm, I'm sure that the camera would be placed where, you know, there's a high number of shootings, or there's some, you know, a lot of activity going on. Um, but then again, I just want to know, like, because I don't want just because people live in nice developments, that these cars are sitting there and that's just where the cameras are. Right, so I'm concerned about bias based in, 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 in this issue. I'm not saying that it's not needed. Um, I just want to know, and it's probably over our head, sure, on the deployment, like, just I'm concerned about that. Because everybody, everyone's interaction is different.
Uh, uh, Pauline Nelson.
Thank you. Um, because C D ten is encompassed by more than one precinct, I'm concerned that it doesn't include the three two precincts. And to some aspect, the thirty precinct, which encompasses all of Jackie Robinson Park, where there was already some violence and with young children. So if they're, if you're rethinking how it goes out, can it be more inclusive of all the, um, reasons that encompass our area, including the, and six. And in reference, yes, and in reference to this gentleman's conversation, I'm, I'm gonna.
Lowing high.
That's it, me. The north of one hundred and forty-fifth street, particularly on Frederick Douglas Boulevard. There are police officers on every block. When they did the pack of, we call it the Roney Building, the only project between one fifty first and fifty second. They have cameras that point at all the Russians. Um, it's just getting to be, um, yeah, I, I wouldn't say it's making it any safer, because it's not where the problem is. They're standing away from where the problems have been. So I'm just a bit concerned that we need to be more inclusive of all the reasons in our area.
Uh, one and two.
Yeah.
Your, your.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I, I think of this, the chairman, um, when stuff like this is presented, is that is it certainly for, for the person who had the idea, original idea to explain it. I think people didn't understand the rationale. I thought that's where we were stuck at, and, and as a committee chair and committee members, we couldn't be able to really explain, but we know that you had some strong ideas, you've been lean people. And we thought, I thought that at best, you could best explain the rationale behind it, why it was a two-way as a ball for all these other precincts. So something must have, there must have been some action force to have been that took place, that encouraged you to, you know, hey, guys, we need to do this.
So, yeah, so I feel like, the reason why I'm saying, this is slightly hatching, I did get on the call, actually, to explain all that. Was, was I had met the twenty-eight precinct at a community forum, and they were sharing specific needs. And so I did even previously, was, they're trying to, um, be a, a resource of support to kind of build with them and say, these are some of the resources, but they're, they've been crying and asking for. So the, the eventual goal was to also get that, have this conversation for all of our precincts, right? However, when I presented the letter, it was just, it was really about their need and us being a support to kind of say, this would their ass support help? And then they had also just had the shooting right there in front of the twenty-eight, where someone passed. So that was, uh, uh, and, and they've also had major incidents on the one-twenty-fifth street corridor with teenagers and so on and so forth, and they don't have the people and businesses in the plane. So it's really see how do we, uh, support and kind of work with them. However, there was concern though, when I, I heard the concern in May's meeting was like, we don't want to just kind of. Talk about the police concerns without having some community concerns. So then, that's when the call for just a meeting, come to hall, is really the cool, the thing. Because honestly, we can get into a lot of issues, but that letter can't hold. Like some of these issues were just like huge, right? So I think maybe we want to just pull the letter back a little bit, and then we need to come home and have a conversation with our, you know, discussion about community policing and the needs of our precincts. And maybe that might be more strategic.
Yes.
Rather than, because we, we'll get into different pockets, there's like, you know, that's one pocket of us is real concern, that that needs to be a town hall meeting, that's what we're maybe requesting. So we, maybe we want to just pull it back a little bit and not be so specific.
Exactly.
And in the past, I hope everybody can hear me, the CEO of each precinct would allow us to come and the community at roll call. So you would get to see all the officers that will be in your neighborhood, in addition to knowing who we were in our neighborhood. So, you know, if they saw us walk back, or, you know, that, that, that it would be someone in the community that they're policing that, you know? Because it used to be when they were different. Due to gentrification, we have officers that are culture, that are worse than the officers that are not of my culture.
Yeah.
So they were assimilated to this whole. So they were assimilated to this whole, this, the love that needs to be addressed.
Oh, totally.
So, so we let her hear that, that we are thinking about pulling it back, because I'm, my concern is that. I'm just hoping to, on the twenty eighth precinct, maybe reactionary to a group of folks who came to the public safety meeting that day, as opposed to the two eight and the three two. Because we have issues in the three two.
Right.
As well, um, that we just haven't had a large representation of our community members coming to public safety to see the law. So I, I always said to them that two eight, three two, and P S A six, I mean, we address so that all of our community members who are experiencing gun violence. Uh, et cetera, can actually benefit from Commissioner Tish being present.
Okay, Ben.
Okay.
We'll do two more, and then we're gonna.
We've already established that, I'm regarding to all the precincts, um, at our last meeting, that not just the people who shoot free crime, so who came. To the public safety meetings, so that was already said.
Okay.
There's some.
Um, quick question, so it sounds like what this letter's intention was, was to kind of help support the two eight. Because it sounds more like a, a human resources issue, like they don't have enough people right now, so they're strained as a. The worst right now, so is there a middle ground where if your resources issue can be addressed? While we work out the details for everything else, because that sounds like summer. If there's some hiring things coming up, you know, can we get the firm moving in that way, or at least have them look at the issue and see what. The right size is for the force, or how we.
That is, we don't have to be so specific. Yeah, we're not very specific, so what I, I think what I'm gonna act is that the board, if the board will allow us, the committee, and myself, and obviously, our public safety chair. To submit a letter this summer, uh, we're going to request a town hall meeting with the police commissioner, that's for the fall. And, and that, and we're also gonna also request that through working with our city council member, who is also our public safety chair, so of the city council. So I think, let's, what, if we would just, that's the item we'll vote for, we won't, uh, we won't work off of this letter. We'll work, allow us to work on a letter as a committee, and, and the, the goal of that letter is simply to request a meeting, a town hall forum with our commissioner. And our, and our city council, and we're. And we'll, we'll, and then that meeting, it'll allow us to then share all those concerns that, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
But I don't know what their.
But, but, I know, yeah. This, yeah. Uh, one thing that the, the twenty eights had shared with me was that, you know, other precincts and what they're getting, and how they weren't getting any of these resources. And so, um, but I think that the sentiment was that people didn't want to do one without also doing the other. Like, they don't, I get, some people might say, well, this is separate, but some people just, and so that's the sentiment I, I, I mean.
My concern is if they don't have, well, even if there's like five more people, just to get through the summer. Because of, you know, just like thinking about all the things that happen in the summertime, and if they're already strained, we're gonna have more problems anyway. So is there a middle ground of at least have them look into the roster and say, hey, okay, we'll lend you five people just to get through the summer. We'll have our town hall meeting, and then we'll look, you know, in the future, because we also don't want the issue of. Police officers are working their butts off, and it's still not enough, you know, things are giving, falling practice, right?
Well, we'll still try, again, part of this is that we want to, again, have positive relationships with the two eight, three two, three six, uh, thirty, you know, all these. So, uh, I think what I'll do is continue to try to have, uh, well, during the summer, more discussion and conversation, to get more information about what those needs look like. So that maybe we'll work on something bigger for all those precincts.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying, but I think right now, there won't be action taken, I don't think I, I won't have that, so, yeah.
Even if we submit this letter, they won't, they won't impact the number of new hires they get for the homicide, for the victim.
Well, at least they'll start looking at it, like, at least starting, and again, it's a drug, it's a drug, you can start the conversation.
And the over the, and I know it is a friend of the community who attends, from when he was a CEO at the three two, before he was a CEO at the thirty. And now he's the annual chief, so maybe we can reach out to him, our friend, and tell him some of our concerns, so that we have someone else on the force. That hears us, and knows the community.
Okay. All right, so let's move, uh, we have the Biden boss task force, um, I, so just to be clear, we voted on amendments. This was just a resolution that's clarified, um, everything we voted on, and thus, we will move forward with, uh, posting that. Once we vote on this resolution, all those checks, the, the brief changes that we had, uh, the amendments all passed, uh, there was nothing that failed. Uh, will be solidified for, uh, and then the new violence can be posted. That would also make, take into effect immediately after that, that the board had created a new office, uh, uh, with, of the assistant treasurer. And so that means that in September, during general meeting, we will convene also, uh, for election for that. Um, uh, this felt or Charlesman present? But I don't know if we have to present, the, the resolution is very clear, and it outlined, um, so I mean, unless there's any questions, it's really just. Um, clarifying what we, and one, one document, what we voted on, on all those amendments. Any questions? Okay, so then we can proceed. Um, but I'm just gonna, budgeting gov, or government and budgets should be right, uh, is this a voting item?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're gonna strike that, because it's not prepared on this resolution. I'm sorry. We'll say something, everybody, the board members here, because. Yeah, no, no, if you have a report, then we'll do that at the end, because that, that's not a part of, because the special meeting had a specific agenda only on voting items from the committee. So we, we'll certainly hear anything we can hear during, uh, the executive committee part, I will certainly let you report. I know, um, so next, there's transportation remarks and historic preservation. Is this a voting item, the one sixteen street?
Um, we, we don't have any voting items, but just.
Okay, then strike that from the agenda, I'm sorry. That would be out of order. Um, okay, any other voting items?
Yeah. Okay, there's a motion to strike.
I'm not. Yeah, yeah.
Commending the agenda.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, well, the chair rules something out of order, because we had already, the, the violence governed that we had to have the agenda, so, thank you. Uh, any other voting items? Okay, so then that would be turned to the election committee, because that is a voting item. And then I'm ready to.
I, I'm.
Okay, so I'm sorry, you know, the election committee.
I, I have a question, but.
Um, that will be in the hands of this week, I'd say, I can share first.
I have a question.
Oh, Donna has a question.
No, this is, uh, uh, when you were, when you were saying voting items, or were you referring to all committees, or that particular committee that, that, that was just talking?
Um, we were supposed to vote on each committee that had voting items this month.
Okay. Yeah, so we just, well, we didn't have, uh, we, we didn't have quorum, but, uh, uh, pretty much the sentiment, we wanted to, uh, move forward from the Health and Human Service Committee, a, and have a, a, a town hall forum series coming in the fall to. Address the issues around vaccines, and so that was pretty much what we needed to put to a vote, that we would. Participate in the fall and do a series, work with, you know, health care practitioners, other organizations to, uh, bring a forum to Harlem to speak about these issues about. What changes are happening with policy relating to vaccines for, uh, uh, seniors, pregnant women, and children. As we move into the fall, and as we move in the era of, of vaccines for things like COVID, and other things that may come up. Because it affects, uh, communities, particularly disproportionately communities of color, and it's an issue of herd immunity will not be met. As well as if, right now, the recommendation is, if, if it's approved by this new body that's been put in place by the president. If they don't recommend it for pregnant women as well as for children, then, uh, what happens is the insurers won't pay for it, so that's affordability issue. So we wanted to, uh, uh, bring a forum to the community to address these issues, to have experts on, uh, vaccines, and coin pediatricians, or other folks to address these issues.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chair Voice, uh, just to keep it, um, line with tradition. The board has never really voted on what committees do in forums like that, if you want to work on that, um, there's, I don't think there's any objection from the executive committee at this time. So I don't think that we are voting on, we, that's something that the committee has worked, decided to work on, uh, the board will be fully supportive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
No problem, but thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over now to our election committee.
Good evening again, um, first of all, I would like to thank the election committee, um, for everything that they did and felt again, and this was a election. That would be, um, Donna Gill, thank you so much, yeah, representative of Donna. Londo Davis, who's been at the with here, up here tonight in person, but it's on our Zoom, and also, uh, Brianna. Uh, thank you so much for stepping up, you're not on these election committees officially, but as more of a secretary, um, thank you so much for helping us out on this. Okay, um, and thank you, everyone, for your nominating, or self-nominating yourself for the open position, uh, first vice chairperson and assistant secretary. First of all, I would like to apologize for any confusion that might have happened in the announcement that was sent out. We did have an administrative oversight, um, and help email, but I thank you for your flexibility. Um, just to clarify that, uh, the email originally went out for just the first vice chairperson position. It should have went out for both positions, um, but again, thank you for your flexibility. As soon as we were able to see that the assistant secretary role was not on there, we sent that out and extended the nomination period for that role only. But thank you so much for your understanding, and for still committing and, uh, being willing to serve. Um, in those nominations, you see on your, you will see on your ballot, um, we received, um. Nominations, uh, for first vice chairperson, and they were accepted by the Honorable Warden Allen, the Honorable Karen Glory, the Honorable Delphina Glover, the Honorable Shubheshi Mitchell. And the Honorable Maurice O'Brien, Dr. Maurice O'Brien Franklin. Um, and then for assistant secretary, we did receive self-nominations and nominations for, and they were accepted. For the Honorable, by the Honorable Sharice Whitehall, and the Honorable Faye Jeremy. The Honorable Tahani Babushi was also nominated, but declined that nomination. Um, and I know there have been some questions about some things, and, uh, I know there were some questions about why the, uh, candidate booklet was ordered the way it was. I thank you for your suggestion, and the next time the election committee puts together, whoever the chair of that is, will leave those, uh, recommendations. Um, I apologize if there was any confusion on that, and I also want to just clarify the term, so this is for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven term. Even though there is an election in November of twenty twenty six, those officers that are in this spot right now will serve until January one of twenty twenty seven. When the new officers are sworn in, so again, there is an election for all officers, November twenty twenty six. But those new officers take their actual positions, January first, or, Jay, whatever the next board member, what meeting is, in January twenty twenty seven. All right, are there any questions about that, or any questions about the process that we have? Okay, so tonight, um, if we can, just for the format, um, I would like to follow, or to follow the booklet in the way it's played out. So that if you want to follow along in your booklet, which is on your phone, uh, we have any bookers on hand, do we have two bookers on hand, we don't? But, okay, so then you can follow on your phone, I can also send you the booklet if you'd like to also read the final statements as the candidates speak. Just one minute, I'm gonna answer your question, each board member will be, uh, allowed to speak for one minute and thirty seconds. Uh, we will have, uh, possibly two minutes before the mic. Okay. We ask you to prepare for a minute and thirty seconds, we're gonna give grace for two minutes, so. Like a minute and thirty seconds. Yes, it is true, that's what's. Um, but all candidates will be open for me, again, it is not requirement that they either submit it or speak tonight. So I don't want that to be held against anybody, then it could all just be. All right, uh, whatever my question is, I noticed in the bios that they sent in, that nobody identified whether they're up for, um. The reinstatement on the board or not, so in their presentation, can they let us know? To, to the best of their ability, when their expiration date is, to be chosen or not chosen, to be open for it. Um, and. I don't, I don't really want that to be asked, whether or not.
Are they twenty nine, twenty seven, or are they twenty, uh, twenty six, twenty eight? I just want to know what their standings are, without having to go to the House President's website to see for that. If they're presenting to us, they shouldn't have any objection to letting us know their standing now on the board and in the future.
Okay, that is a request that I wanted to make that, I don't want them, because they would have prepared statements tonight, so I don't want them to feel any anxiety about that, and also. You know, I, I can see that that could prejudice somebody against voting for them, if they think that they may be rolling off and not be appointed. And maybe not be able to fill the rest of the tenure, like what happened with this person, right? So I, I don't, I just, I mean, again, it would be up to them, rather than, whether they would want to put that in there, right? Because they've already prepared statements, okay, chair.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just thinking as an individual, not necessarily, I'm not beating the capacity, um, I, I, I mean, I, I, I'm speaking as board member right now. My, my, I, I, I've never, because we've never asked that of anyone, I never ne- announced when I was running for chair, what, when, when my term is. I, I just, I, I feel like we should allow, and you didn't just feel comfortable to share that, but I just feel like it would be appropriate for them to read the prepared statements that they have, because I don't even know. Why or why that would be relevant.
They're ready for a term that would be, they would have that position, about just doing two terms, and then they have to sit down.
Well, you know.
I'm looking at it, it's okay.
Oh, yeah. Here's something I can, we can all clarify, everyone is, is able to reapply. No one is, no one who's running is, 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 um, term limited up. That, so that, that just clarified. Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, okay.
Right, the board member, uh, Franklin, do you have questions?
No, I'm just coming, I'm only agreeing with my sister on, of meeting meetings, but that one I told you. I think, but that's not my priority for, for others, but, so, yeah, I don't think that's, that actually any priority that, we're definitely.
Okay, and that is optional, if you'd like to do that, that is not, but thank you, board member, and for your suggestion.
Yeah.
Um, are there, if there's no other questions, anything online from anybody? Um, so it will be, the election will be ran through our electronic, uh, election runner again. Um, so, uh, Nina, you are loading everybody's emails in there, um, as we will, who attend, it's really making sure that those emails are in there. Um, we will announce as soon as we can, that all of the emails have been loaded in, and that has been sent. Right, you're gonna let them know as soon as we get that done, correct? So that you can be on the lookout for your election ballot in your email. Now, it will be the same format that we saw before, that Google Doc, right? So you will have, you see the names, and it will be required that you select something, but there are also, if you're not, uh, inclined to vote for anyone there, you can also submit it, right? So it will, you do need to select something, right? Um, and then we give a submitting. If you have any issues, please, you know, I'll be walking around, um, let us know, we do have paper ballots available, then you can fill out if you have an issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, board member Gill.
I'm gonna do the paper ballots, because I don't want to hold them.
Okay, okay, so we already know one, uh, this board member Gill, she left her opponent home, so we, we know we need one paper ballot. Okay. Are there any other questions? And if we have, uh, we, we want to, what's any snacks with the election runner, so as soon as, we'll let you know, you can be on the lookout for it, okay? And our online folks, you should also receive it as well, okay? Peter. Thank you.
Um, Miguel, I have to tell you. I feel like.
I want you to go. I'd like to thank Donna Gill for bringing the snacks.
Oh, no, that's.
Shirts, I just wanted that.
She saw that. I think I know where they went, Joe.
Yeah, I ran out there. All right, I have to hear what your heart is by our share, that you're gonna go ahead and start with our speeches. We're gonna go ahead and start with our speeches. So go ahead and get your snacks ready, sit back and relax, go be entertained by our candidates. We're excited about this. Okay. Karen is going around with service. Help us, okay, yes, so nourish, gonna be able to listen. Okay. Uh, we're gonna. Do you need a drink?
Two roll call?
One roll call. Number one.
Just one.
Yeah, for this discussion. Over that protocol check. All right. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start with our candidates for first vice chairperson and Kim, we're calling them, whatever that, in your booklet, in case you want to read it off. Okay, uh, the Honorable William Allen.
Hi, you know. Which one's the nice, yeah, which one's the nice? I don't have time to roll it. Let me just say, everything's like in the book list. And, um, we're at a, a pivotal point here in Harlem and, uh, I'm really so happy to want to be a part of the focus. You know, uh, I know what my skills are, maybe you know what those skills are, but my focus would be certainly, um, how to maintain our core, and I reach back for each other and in the harbor that I see everybody putting in. And particularly when we're in front of the public. Uh, it's been a couple of meetings where I felt, um, a little concerned. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that after we began to face the tough issues, that we really work on those things together before we present ourselves to the public who might misunderstand what we do. And so in my proposal, uh, I kind of talk about those things, how to work through those kind of issues. I also talk about how we can increase, uh, civic engagement by our community. Uh, I had proposed, uh, almost six months ago, that we need to consider looking at turning our district into about ten zones, where we're liaisons. Cause we, I, I think that we're stronger when the community is connecting with us. And so I'm hoping that, uh, if I can be with competitive initiatives, then certainly we're going to be with the chair, and certainly working with all the officers and community members, to make them effective. And secondly, um, I want to make sure that we're utilizing all the resources that are available in our community and our city that really help this board, like this summer, we have two students from Cornell, but we should have students from City College. We should have students from Columbia and, and so, uh, we might be missing out on some opportunities and not just undergraduates, but also the other graduate students involved too. So I don't want to take up too much time, I think I said what I said in the booklet. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
All right. Thank you, next we'll have board member Ori, board member Karen Ori, oh, yes, you're over there.
I'm just wanting to read back to, uh, uh, something a little different than what's in the statement that you have. And I just want to say, good evening, everyone, I have served consecutively since two thousand and ten. And during my eight years as chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee, I was able to realize an institute of accomplishments. In addition to chairing one hundred and eighty committee meetings of the Parks and Rec, and organizing and coordinating a variety of annual community outreach events. Under my leadership, the Parks and Recreation Committee successfully added over one hundred and forty million dollars in renovations and upgrades to our parks and, uh, recreational facilities. These efforts have led to a revitalization of our open spaces and have increased park equity. Some of my most notable special proj- projects, um, in advocacy for twenty sixteen to twenty twenty five include the National Landmarking of Fulton River Park, the Central Park Aide of the Exonerate, the Jackie Robinson Park, four point seven million dollar renovating renovations, the commemoration of Seneca Village in Central Park, the Brigadier General Charles Young Playground Ball Field conversion to a Coward Get Found, uh, Field of Dreams, one of twenty eighth in the country. I have drafted a combined fifty or more resolutions and letters of support that were all successfully passed by the board from twenty eleven through to March twenty twenty five, including most recently for the Apollo Theater renovation and the safeguarding of seniors from federal cuts and policy changes to crucial services. I've also served on the executive committee for twelve years, uh, also the education youth and libraries committee, the health and human services committee, and co-chair the former transportation parks and recreation committee. My dedication continues to enhance the quality of life in Central Harlem, reflecting my labor and commitment to the advancement of, uh, CB ten as well as the community in large. It would be my great honor to serve as Manhattan Community Board Ten's first vice chair in support of the, uh, boardship, and thank you.
And next we have board member, the Honorable Sandy A. Kellifer.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, I don't have to read my bio either, but I've been, I've been a part of the team for, for more than four years, four or five years, I think it is. Uh, land use, housing, uh, budgeting government now, economic development, uh, there's a couple others. So I'm not gonna talk so much about myself, I want to talk about the board. Uh, first, welcome to the new commu- to, to the new community, community board members. It's a pleasure to have you, I hope to get to know you all to be much better. Uh, I wanted to say to you that as a member of a community board, you have an awesome responsibility to represent and advocate for the needs of our community and to articulate their concerns. That is your job. Uh, each year we do a district lead survey. It is our guiding light. And I hope, and hope that as we move into the future, we focus on that. And, uh, we also talked in one of the, one of our meetings, I made the recommendation that I'm gonna be doing some, some district meetings this summer. And we hope that the new members of the committee can join us and sort of get your feet wet and, and see the kind of work that we're doing. Uh, I also, I also want to talk about, well, first of all, as vice chair is, aside from being a community board, is that you are the supporter of the chair. You are an ear, a counselor, a strategist, who is dedicated to helping the next community get their job. Um, let, uh, one of the things that I would like to recommend, this is my last point, is that we use the technology and tools that are available to help us be more better, faster, lighter, and more efficientally. Uh, one of the things I recommended is that we have a central filing system, a virtual central filing system, where all of the committees can, any board member can go into the system, review the, review the meeting logs, review, uh, the conversations and the documents of any committee. So that when you come to a general board meeting and you have to vote something, want something, especially for economic development, which is very crucial and very important of the work that we do, we'll have, have, you will have had some background so that you're not voting blind. I'm big on systems and practices of being more efficient. My name is Delcina Glover, and I actually go.
Thank you so much. Now we're gonna hear from the Honorable Mitchell, the Rachel.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Shatik Mitchell. And as many of you know, uh, I've been running for my time as district manager, community board ten from two thousand and eighteen to twenty three. In that role, I had the honor and responsibility of being the public face of this board, showing up, even being not just as a representative, but as a problem solver, a bridge builder, and advocate for the people of Central Harlem. For five years, I worked side by side with both our former chair Cecily Harris and our current chair Marquis Harrison, making sure that they were both well-informed and prepared to be, in many ways, the responsibility of first vice chair. Our natural extension of that work provided support, structure, and leadership to ensure this board functions with effectiveness, how community deserves. So tonight I stand before you not only as a district manager, but as a dedicated board member, asking for your support to serve as next first vice chair of Manhattan Community Board Ten. Over the years, I've had the privilege of working with many of you to address real life issues that affect our community. I made it my mission to strengthen relationships with city agencies, empower our communities, and respond swiftly to community, uh, concerns. These are not just talking points, these are the foundation of my service. I supervise this current staff in good times and mean times, including moments when only two people were in the office and we still made it work. My only candidate here to select was actually running the district office, so I know what it takes. I've worked with every committee chair, so we have a district need statement on, on time each year to the Department of City Planning. Um, every street community, every block party permit, every recollection application, I would even process them. I paid the office's bills, wrote a letter of support for a CB ten event, reached out to vendors, and most importantly, I showed up every single day, even when we were under staff, even when I faced personal challenges. Um, because all this work is administrative, it's also deeply emotional, the pain our constituents face every day, from housing insecurity to gun violence, human protection, and my, I'm a two minute. That's why I wish to thank the board.
Um, and then now the Honorable Dr. Maurice.
Thank you, everyone, um, reading college, first of all, just like I said, there's no greater love than for a human being to radiate in their life for another person. And I think that's what community stuff is all about. I write in an article, uh, on forty seven Earths of Age, I talk about those warriors who ran back into the fire when people were dying, that's, that's the work that I've been engaged in for many, many years. Doing, being the voice of the worship of our community, and I think that is pretty much the work that we do as members of the community. So now I'm gonna read my statement. Since taking my position as Manhattan Board Ten, and it's one of my struggles, that's been getting into attending years of all community meetings, including executive committee. I did that quite a bit during, since I started, uh, in developing a thorough understanding of our bylaw development system. As chair of parks, as current chair of Parks and Recreation, I'm curating the formal boundaries, managing requests to all borough presidents, to our borough president to incorporate more of our, being those parts I mentioned, under the stewardship of, of that CB ten initiative. I am sure that these historic places receive the company's support and that it's, it's, uh, I'm also a part of COBAD, the New Parks Commission Needs Survey, both, you know, programming for theme, for theme guards. In twenty twenty three, I also did a district need statement for agriculture. Over the past two years, I've directed development of, uh, directed development statements for the sort of park landmark for, um, preservation, outlining our cultural, um, preservation priority, and contributing to the architecture of these, uh, wealth. In March of twenty twenty four, I presented my testimony before the city budget subcommittee. I did a little priest running for public health department, one hundred thirty seven, fifth avenue. By addressing our crucial needs and remanglers, my twenty twenty three court finances, Department of Transportation Commission, resulting in safety studies and subsequent upgrades in lighting and signals on learning board did not next, which is greatly enhancing diversity. As vice chair of the Health and Human Services, uh, this is in shaping this one's beginning for, just even said, that's it?
Now we're gonna move into the next role that's open, um, and that is the role of the assistant secretary. So we're gonna, now, here from the Honorable Sharice Whitehall, followed by the Honorable Bailey Jeremy.
Hello, hello. Yeah, that is kind of my time. Chair, fellow board member, the community member. My name is Sharice Whitehall, and I am honored to be considered for the role of assistant secretary of community board ten. Over the past two years, I've had the privilege of serving as the second vice chair of education, youth, and libraries committee, and as an active land use and housing committee member. In that time, I proudly supported and helped exec- execute, sorry, meaningful initiatives such as the District Five Annual Toy Drive, the Met to the Meta Youth Engagement Initiative, and Capitol Grant's efforts securing almost two million dollars of critical funding for our schools, and the twenty twenty four CB ten award honoring two of our community's great leaders, Dr. Hazel Duke and Assemblywoman Ida Dick Evans. I've also worked to connect our community with culture and resources, helping organize trips to the Goonah High Museum, our public safety, and housing forum, and more. These efforts reflect my deep commitment to Harlem, the community board ten, and the people who live here. The role of assistant secretary is one of reliability, attention to detail, and clear communication. Seven year old secretary is not available and, and according to the one in the present. With over ten years of experience as an executive and having served three years as assistant secretary for the neighborhood advising board in Manhattan ten, I know that he needs to be dependable, responsive, and organized. I understand the importance of tracking directives, maintaining transparency, and upholding the integrity of board business. I believe leadership isn't always about being out front. Sometimes it's about doing the behind the scenes work that makes everything run smoothly. That's the spirit I bring to the role. It would be a true honor to continue serving this board and this community as your next assistant secretary. Thank you for your consideration and for the opportunity to keep doing the work we all care about so deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Now we're gonna hear from the Honorable Bailey Jeremy.
Good evening, all, I'm Bailey Jeremy. Um, well, you can't see your picture, so I'm just gonna start sharing. Uh, my name is Bailey Jeremy, um, and I am actively. Uh, my name is Bailey Jeremy, um, and I am active for your support as Assistant Secretary. I, for those of you who do not know me, I currently serve as the Vice Chair of Parks and Recreation, led by Chair, uh, Mark, uh, Doctor Bernie Franklin. My background is that I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, uh, serving life and grownups families throughout Harlem and beyond. I'm also a director of Presidential.
No, it's a woman on the community board.
Oh, I thought you said a woman.
No, not.
It's mutical.
All right. Uh, in addition to my, uh, administrative, uh, administrative role, I also have significant history, um, in, um, D E I work throughout Harlem. Um, some of the organizations were Children's Village and, uh, cases. Um, I, fun fact, we started the C B ten, sorry, we started a C B ten speech podcast, and I was the host of that, uh, podcast. And I podcast, uh, multiple events, including my education forum at Frederick Douglass, uh, Academy. Um, we, I interviewed the Manhattan Borough President. We also did an event for art and culture. Um, and we also did the annual candidates forum. I think that podcasting is very important and it's related to, uh, the secretary because one of the responsibilities of the podcast host is to capture the event, um, and everything that is transpiring during those events. Um, and I, I truly believe that that transfers when it comes to the role and responsibilities of the secretary. Um, and I also wanted to highlight, my attendance is outstanding. Um, I bring my children everywhere I go. And the only time, the only time I missed the board meeting was when I gave birth to them. Uh, and those pictures are at Community Board 10's office. So please vote for Bailey Jeremy and her to defend her.
All right, so roll call. We're going, we presented, uh, voting items, and so there's gonna be a roll call. Um, yeah.
Tonya Rucci, President. William Allen.
William Allen, President.
Adam O'Bah. Adam O'Bah. Dominic Voice.
Present.
Sydney Brown Laffman, President. Jared Chancy. Um, and again, new board members, please forgive me, I will learn your names correctly. Uh, Ernest Clayton.
Here.
Billy Council. Billy Council.
Not online.
Ula Fai, Ula Faiati, Con Adams. Yeah. Well, how's my pronoun? You love the yes, okay, please correct me. Patrice Davis, President. Landell Davis.
Yes.
Karen Dixon, President. Gerald T. Downing.
President, President.
Doctor Maurice Franklin.
President.
Donna Gibbons.
President.
Donna Gill.
Yes.
Letitia Gilmore. Letitia Gilmore.
Not online.
Oh, okay, yes, yes. Stanley Wiegand.
Not online.
Was that him?
Stanley Wiegand.
He's muted.
Stanley, is that you? Not responding.
Present.
Delcinea Glover.
Delcina Glover is here.
Tiffany Farrell.
Here.
Cecily Harris.
President.
Marquis Harrison.
President.
Irene Henry.
Yeah.
Karen Ward.
President.
Bailey Jeremy.
President.
Kumaro Johnson. Kumaro Johnson.
Not online.
Um, Bryda Jones.
Not online.
Doria Josna.
Not online.
Ladrimer Lark.
Present.
Dario Maestra. Dario Maestra.
Not online.
Breonna Flores, President. Beverly McLaurin.
President.
Venisha Metka. Venisha Metka.
Not online.
Kumaria Milford.
Not online.
Shatik Mitchell.
President.
Lashanna Myers. Lashanna Myers.
President.
Thank you. Barbara Nelson, President. Stephanie Palmer.
President.
Daniel Patterson.
Present.
Jerel Peaker.
President.
Derek Parkinson.
Now he, now he wants to mute himself, but.
Derek Parkinson.
He's muted, he's muted.
Derek.
Derek, is he on mute or put in the chat? Derek Parkinson. Dana Point.
President.
Charles Powell.
Present.
Eliza Saunders.
President.
Elia Stendberry.
Alia, for support, Stendberry, President.
Okay. Alia, for support, okay. Can we correct that for the future, to have her full name in the, in the, in the roll call, if you. Carla Small Covington. Carla Small Covington.
Miss enroll. Miss enroll call.
Lawrence Smart.
President.
Bushawn Thompson.
President.
Lydell Tyson. Sharice Whitehall.
Sharice Whitehall is President.
Derek Parkinson.
Derek Parkinson, present, pardon.
Yeah, thank you, we have four. Thank you, we have four. Uh, just as a reminder, please, just in the future, be mindful of when we're about to do roll call, in case you would step away and come back, just so that we don't have to hold it up in the future. Thanks, everyone.
Uh, I'm sorry, we, we, well, I know you have, we have four.
Yes.
Get the number.
Yes. Yes. Um, so, right. So that number is thirty. We have thirty people in person, we have ten online, and we have nine absent.
So we have forty.
Forty.
Okay.
Yes, yes, thirty in person, so we're forty until thirty.
So forty ballots should be sent.
Yeah.
Okay.
So thirty in person, ten online, and nine absent. So there should be forty ballots until, because those online are eligible to vote, who's the only person.
Thank you. Um, so, by the way, that is, uh, the very good roll call, as far as the attendance.
Yeah.
For a special meeting, I, I always, um, as we know, this hopefully is very likely to come, because it's to come. And I'm taking a quick moment to plug, that we need to make sure that we're present at, at board meetings and our committee meetings. And so, um, I'll talk more in a few seconds about that, um, about attendance issues. Um, so, um, with that said, uh, we're going to get ballots for the election part. However, if there's no objection, um, for, as we were conducted, for our, for our special, other special business, which was, um, the committee votes, we would do a voice vote if there's no objection. Hearing none, okay? So I'm gonna group things, if you would allow me to, because, um, you know, some of the things are relevant to each other. So we have for economic development, there is something that I don't have on the agenda, though, um, that was, uh, I'm sorry. Let me, let me do the S O A. We have, uh, three S O A renewals that are for Hall of Night, um, uh, Hall of Night, and, oh, no. You're wrong, yeah, that's why, okay. I moved my agenda, yeah. Sorry. I'm working on my own agenda. Um, sorry, so we have, yes, now, we have a letter of support for the bike cafe business, which is a lot, uh, that the committee voted on, um, and they voted that was supported. Is there any discussion? I think we had some discussion. All those in favor of providing the bike cafe business as a letter of support, are to be known by saying aye.
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 Any opposed to the record? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay, who has the record? Okay, could you state your name for the continued sanctions?
Three stages.
Okay. Okay.
Sharice Whitehall.
Stephanie Yarrell, and Sharice Whitehall, have a say. Any other abstentions? Any recusals? Hearing none, then we will provide that letter of support. We have three echo. Okay, uh, and just before we go on, if there's anyone else, there are currently, um, between everyone online, there's a request for two paper ballots. Is there any other paper ballots? So that means that there'll be thirty-eight electronic ballots sent out and two paper ballots provided. Okay, so if you would raise your hand, you're requesting a paper ballot. So that we just, everyone can stay home. We have one, for Stephanie Yarrell, we have Donna Gill. And Jerel, and William Allen, so that's now four. So that's four paper ballots and thirty-six electronic ballots. You can add vote twice, or some of you, uh, if you get. Yeah.
Four in the voters, so I don't know if people want to vote, but it's just voting. Some are living with their pregnant, if there's a paper ballot. I had to vote. Again, you said one on one, one person. I'm sorry, William. How many people have ballots, one online? No, how many are?
Just a person.
Yeah, mine's have to be electronic. You can't receive electronically.
Yeah, you're not here. Okay. So we have four and thirty-six electronic ballots. Uh, wait, it's just that I'm on, you'll do the electronic.
Now we're done with the three.
Okay, well, we're, we just wanna be very clear, we're just gonna have three. So we have Donna Gill, and Jerel, we have.
Down, 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 he has a question.
Uh, Gerald T. Downing have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, Gerald T. Downing, if you don't mind. Um, what are the paper ballots for?
Yeah, okay, so. We're gonna, the paper ballots are for people who don't have access to electronic ballots. You, you, everyone online will have electronic ballots, um, and everyone owning in this room, freaking to have requested paper ballot. That's for the election of the first vice chairperson and the election of the assistant secretary.
The people online, we will, uh, we will give paper ballots via email.
No, you're going to receive an email? And, and is the email being sent out yet? Not yet.
No.
You're going to receive an email, at the point when the email is sent, I'm going to tell you to check your email so that you can also go ahead and vote.
Okay, we'll see. Okay, thank you.
This is everyone, I'll get you all, just so everyone knows that obviously who's, we sign our ballots as a part of public records, so, you know, we're just allowing us to calculate, we put our name. It's allowing us to calculate it, um, faster electronically, but there is a secret in a public board. So how you vote could be retrieved, not to say, I'm just telling you that so that if you see your name, you don't put your name, then that ballot will be a ballot. Okay? All right, um, I like, I'll continue with the S O A renewals. We have three S O A applicants that were voted in support of our committee. We have the one forty-eight Deli Grocery Team, the Culture Bakery LLC, and Roots, S J, uh, Sunny Realty, uh, LLC, uh, were all supported for, oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me, forgive me, yeah. There was one renewal, so I'm gonna just do that, one renewal of the one forty-eight Deli Grocery. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of, supporting, um, the one forty-eight Deli Grocery, were there at their labor duel. If you know, might say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Breonna Flores opposed.
Breonna Flores opposed, any other opposed? Any abstentions? Recusals? Hearing none, it is supported. Now we have two new applicants, uh, with this Culture Bakery LLC, and Roots, S J, Sunny Realty, with the number six, uh, LLC, um, new applicant, supported, okay? Uh, vote for supported out of committee, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of providing a letter of support for those new advocates, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? One, you can provide, just, uh, state your name. Oh, just, okay.
Opposed.
I mean, everybody is opposed to Roots, uh, Sunny Realty. Record. Any other opposed? Any, okay, any, um, abstentions? Recusals, abstentions, could you say? On both.
Yeah.
Okay, abstaining on both, Culture Bakery and Roots, S J. Any other abstentions? Recusals? Hearing that, then they will be supported, and those, um, will be noted for the record. At this time, uh, just so that you're aware, your ballots have been sent. Uh, everyone online and everywhere, the ballots have been sent. I will hold off for a few minutes so that everyone can focus and retrieve their ballots, I won't talk.
Happen to, happen to the Mickey comedy fan. Everyone online, uh, when you already see your ballot, you can just, um, put your, um, to give a vague hand. That way we show that everybody received their ballot online.
The last part is for you.
Know that if the seat may go, may go. I know, that's down, that's down. Those online, it may take a minute before you receive it, okay, Darrell? Okay.
Yeah, do you want my hotspot?
Yeah. Yeah, you should probably use a hot, I, I'm using my hotspot right now.
Okay, yeah, we'll continue while we continue our bullet, please let me know when you get, um, the thing. So we can just continue with it, be sure of the office of candidates, uh, that they, they meet their requirements, or whether they need to bring it through the board. Okay? Vote.
Yeah, got it now.
Okay, so we'll take, uh, a few minutes to vote. Online, you should be receiving your electronic ballots now. Please check and verify.
And you're checking your email. Put a raised hand up. Online, just give me a raised hand, you don't have to text me, that way I can see everybody. Darren? Finished? Hold on, hold on. Long, Darrell, we have your special. Stanley, are you able to receive your email? The Dreamer, I didn't see your hand, did you see your ballot?
I just received it, literally just now.
Darrell, the Dreamer, did you receive your ballot?
I just received it.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, I, I wasn't sure, were you saying you did receive it or you have not received yours? Oh, okay, all right. Everyone online received it.
Um, so, as I stated, um, this has, your name has to be recorded, and that didn't permit you to record your name. It's going to have to be done again. We're going to throw that out. Um, and we're going to electronically, we have, your name, you have to type in your name. Only if you had a Google account, it might show your email.
Yeah.
But it's supposed to be able, that any individual, you know, like when we printed the result, everybody's name would be attached, Marquis Harrison, uh, you know, and so on and so forth. So we have to have a space where you put in your name. Okay, so we're going to, give us two minutes, we're gonna continue with the vote, we're gonna finish this voting off, so that when this comes, we just, you go to the bottom, okay? All right, sorry about that. Okay, so we're gonna continue, we have, uh, uh, the Parks Recreation Committee. So we have two letters of support and then one resolution, okay? Uh, I'm gonna, you know, am I gonna put those letters of support together?
Yeah.
Right, so two letters of support, am I correct?
No, they're, they're not even letters of support.
Okay, is it just the rest?
There's a resolution.
Yeah.
Then there are two letters of collaboration to, to unite, you know, and a letter, um, that, that actually activates the request, goes to the borough president, uh, to the borough committee's plan, city's.
Got you, okay, so what, there was, there, okay, one was, it does say letter of collaboration, I'm not. So what we'll just say, if there are two letters and one resolution, the Parks Recreation Committee, and we would like to make sure the voiding powers, uh, that they, that we should provide these letters, uh, and send them off to the. So one is not on here.
There, there, there are three letters, they, they submit the three letters.
Okay.
One letter to the borough president. And then, you know, questioning, asking, you know, I think it's already been handed, and then two letters to, uh, community board nine and eleven. So those are the three letters that they're sending. Never worry about that.
Got you, I guess it's, the way it's written, it actually, it's to kind of clarify that. So the number, but the content of the letters is that, the letter that's labeled support is to the borough president, and that's for, um, the, right, that, and then for it. Okay, so there are three letters being provided, um, and I think really, but the contents is outlined in, in this, um, ANC. So, uh, if we have, unless there's any more discussion on the letters, we'll provide those letters out of the, yes.
Yeah. That have, um, this whole thing with the letter of support, the resolution, and the letter of collaboration, I mean, it's pretty much, it's about the same thing. So if we could be concise and top and solidate all of these things together, because it just seems like we're voting on something that is all encompassing. So why we need, and then, and is this the new process that we wanted going forward for everything?
Okay, uh, that's correct.
That's right, so, so there are, so there, so there's, so we're trying to, so there, there are three left, as the chair said, there are three left. So the first letter is to the borough president, because we need to initiate this based on the city charter. And so we're sending a letter to the borough president, requesting, uh, the, the partner, uh, for the city planning, relook at the boundary result, community board ten, so that's the first. The se, the, the other letter, well, and then there's the resolution, but the following letter that we're sending to community board nine, community board eleven, is about collaboration, so, you, so you see.
But I think you have the borough president, and this here letter, the community board nine and, and eleven.
No, I don't, I don't think that, I think we are, the community board need to be decisive and.
Question that we don't know, is the borough president, uh, be enabled to do?
We're doing, we're doing, I'm trying to do two separate things, so one is activated to the community, to the borough president, the other is, because we've already been talking with nine and eleven, it's just through, um.
A matter.
Or it's, uh, the second place, this is, it is, but we, we, it needs to be on the record. These things need to be on the record, we just can't assume that, uh, when whoever else comes to nine, or who else comes to eleven, that they're going to collaborate, that just, well, this is a, for me, I've started documenting, we're putting it on the record as, as community board ten, we understand this, and know that there's some boundary challenges. I would go on further to say, that, you know, if Dr. Duke, she might say that we have been redlined as a community board, if you go back and look at the boundaries. Because we, you know, if we talk, I've used that word, it looks like we've been redlined, if you look at our district, the parks, the major parks, with exception of, with Vice, with Chair, uh, Dunn regarding, uh, Virginia General, so, we, we have been redlined. Those major parks that we all think are part of community board ten are not, they're in other, uh, parts, and so, so for me, this is a, we're putting a marker out as, as, as members of this committee, saying we acknowledge, we see this, and, and things that we should be done, we're missing it through the chart, but we're also talking to eleven and nine, which also see this as a challenge. It's like, look, we want to formally collaborate with you, this is the letter, uh, creation, uh, they go. Community for us to formally just collaborate with, just, I, I think, uh, uh.
They talk to her.
We want, we want to initiate this as a committee, we're already meeting. We, we're already started meeting with them, I extended meetings, and we're already starting attending meetings, and we're already providing, letting more.
In Karen Jackson?
Yeah, um, sorry, um, I came in on this conversation, but when I read it, I did have a question, and then Dr. just used some language there. Dr. Franklin, but he just used some language around, we want to collaborate. What does that collaboration look like, and do you know, at this juncture, the thoughts of CB nine and eleven, because those parks, uh, like their properties, for instance, I think with St. Nicholas Park, although it is there in our district, it goes up to, uh, Morning Side and, almost a block away from it, which is CB nine. So I'm just curious, do we have any political idea?
Right, so we've, that's a great question, so we have the, the chair of their parks, and the chair of open spaces, and the, the parks and, and, and nine, and open spaces got a different name than eleven, so we, we, we have been having conversations, directly sending, uh, the, the, the parks, uh, New York City parks, uh, meetings around Marcus Garvey Park, so we are already, uh, districtally collaborating, and meeting with them, I think in some ways, uh, the, the chairs of, of nine, see the same thing that we could have, could have raised. And so they've really got the, to work with us, and they have been listening to me before.
So if I have to follow, I guess, I'm sorry, because I realized I'm in the corner, I'm sorry, I guess, how realistic do we see it, for instance, when you say Nicholas Park began? How realistic do we see them putting St. Nicholas Park in CB ten? Because that's like, that's, that's like CB nine, one of their big thoughts, if you will, and I'm just, I think I'm looking at it from a man, so forgive me.
No.
So each district is gonna, or board is gonna weigh what they gain and what they, what they lose, right? So, yes, they may be talking now, well, talking, that's the start of the relationship, it starts the conversation. But when it gets down to the, I think we're clear on what our parks committee wants. Are we really clear on what nine and eleven they want, and the potential for what they may gain or lose?
Right. That's a great question, and so, so if you look at this as a political strategy, uh, uh, around, um, gentrification, you know, uh, uh, you know, and redlining sort of historically, what happened? That was the question I asked the, uh, the, 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 the deputy borough president, when she talked about, so what happened to this idea of it? Really, I, I seen what you see, Dr. Franklin, this, the community board eleven and Roosevelt Island, they have all of that, the entire waterway, they have the waterway. Their waterway going east and west of Roosevelt Island. If you go back and look, just look at our boundaries, what you see, it looks like we were boxed in, and all the major parks around us were taken, were never carved, they were carved out, it looks like we were carved out. Just let me, let me say one more thing, just look at Marcus Garvey Park. Start on 110th Street, it starts on 10,000,000, as soon as it gets to 120th Street, where Marcus Garvey Park is, it goes in, goes around the park, comes back out on 120th Street, and it goes right back to there. It's a carve out, that's, the park takes a plan, car.
So I'm not just agreeing with you about the, the redlining and how it looks that we're boxed in, what I, what I know as a social worker.
Right.
Is that people want to keep what they have. Let me finish, so they talk the talk, but they often want to keep what they have, so even though eleven may have Roosevelt Island. I, I just want to know, because I think we're gonna support it, but I just, I'm really thinking about the, the realistic feasibility of it actually coming to fruition. It's okay, no, Karen, if you think about Central Park, also they wait here online. When you think about Central Park, now anything that takes place with Central Park has to go to all the community boards around Central Park. So basically, if you think of, of that aspect, then in collaboration with, thank you, in collaboration with eleven and nine, the discussion doesn't just stop. Uh, similarly, similar to the transportation, the sixteen, or one sixteen, but it doesn't stop with ten, because it goes into eleven and it goes into nine.
Strategically, the Parks Department is already starting to collaborate with us, strategically, the Parks Department is already collaborating, collaborating with our Parks Committee around Marcus Garvey Park, St. Nick's Park, and, uh, and, and More, Morning Side Park. They're, they're already, so, so, so.
Yeah, we have one suggestion.
Sure, I just have one more thing, but, so I do see this as, this is their political strategy. This is, and, because, because St. Nick's Park, our council members are, it covers St. Nick's Park, the request for funds for St. Nick's Park, go to our council members, the request for funds for Marcus Garvey Park, go to our council member, and so, in the same way, from Morning Side, they're involved, and so we're already, in some ways, you know, with our council district done, we're already, so, so that's already happened. I'm just asking, I'm saying politically, something happened years ago when they created these dishes. And so I asked the question, the question to the deputy borough president, she, and she's saying she was gonna look them up, make her, and speak, figure out what happened. Something happened when the districts were designed. If you look at it, it's really, we were cut out.
Yeah.
We were cut out. I mean, when I asked about the hundred thirty one, uh, uh, Paul River Park, and this is, I'm asking about this. When I, when they asked me about Paul River Park, the first time I went to community board meeting, I say, well, a community member, I asked him about Marcus Garvey Park, our chair said, that's not in our district. The same thing about Paul River Park, when, when Y T Walker and I were going over there cleaning up, and contacting, uh, the parks about cleaning up that park, it's not in our district, why is it not in our district? It was running by people.
Uh, that park has been voted as, it's not, it's not.
No, it's not.
Paul River Park.
Look at the map, it's not, it's not, I'm clear about the map. I'm clear about the mark, but, but they, but they will talk to us, but it's not in our district. And so, so all I'm trying to say is, this question around boundary, is that we need to, that's a real question, I know, a real question is, we need to have, the third around, we need to take things down, we need to take things down, it's like, we don't want to push it, we don't have to.
Why are we going to the borough president, and, or, for the borough president to do political, and how come it's not going to the Missionary Park? So that would be a letter that he's there.
Further charter, further charter, further charter around boundaries, has to go back to the Department of City Planning. And that's initiative to the borough president, so I, it's. So, so that's why we're going to the borough.
Okay, so, here's what we, this meeting is really, I'm telling you, I'm a little concerned about the time, because we were really supposed to be done with this meeting. Um, and I'm going to move it to the E C, so I can move, so everyone, you know, can't wait, um. We have this before us, I would say, if we're gonna vote or no? Vote yes or no? We're gonna vote, what I'm saying, you vote yes or no, you know, but do we need to do a roll call, then, I don't know, but, uh, let's just do, um, so. I, I think you've explained a lot, I, I do believe that all, a lot of the segments have been expressed, that we want, that there are some clear problems with the boundaries of our parks, that really don't, and I think we all agree to that. So this is just the process that we're initiating to begin to address, and so, and there'll be adjustments. Okay, um, but yeah.
I just want to clarify, what is the parks more invented, uh, problem of parks in, uh, ten, eleven, and twelve?
Yes, I think, I just mentioned this, is, yeah, definitely, Paul River Park is ten, eleven, and twelve, yes. Okay, so with that said, um, all those in favor of providing, uh, those letters of support, I mean, that was, I'm sorry, giving, providing those letters, uh, to those entities, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Two for the record, we have Donna Gill and we have Karen Corry are opposed, any others? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, Jerel, your last name is?
Peker.
Jerel Peker is abstaining.
I think I could abstain because I was in different presentation.
Okay. That's, that's your call.
I have to tell us why you're.
Yeah, it's only.
Okay, you're abstaining, only matter of recusal. Okay, that was just a discussion, he had presented it right now.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to abstain?
Yes, yes, no, I don't want to.
Okay, you're voting, okay, all right, no attention, I'm going to go see yours. Okay, any other abstentions, recusals, hearing none, there's also a resolution that was provided, and that is, that was in our package. That resolution is kind of, is an hour, uh, rec, uh, proclamation from our board, and a sentence, right, of our position, um. Any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Discussion, so, um, our, so, based off of all these concerns, is this, is this, or, can you go back with these concerns?
No, not going back to the chat, we gonna vote, we're voting, so now you're talking about the resulate, resolution. Do not want us to, you, you wanna have a discussion on the resolution, or do you wanna vote aye and nay?
My question, my question was what I just asked, I was asking, I hear a lot of feedback, a lot of concerns, and my question was, are these going to be addressed? Are we going to take some additional time to address it, or is it as is?
No.
There's a lot of different feedback.
No, the feedback though is more about processing, so, every sentiment that we move along with, like, that is an issue, right?
It will be addressed, what I'm saying.
The committee can, can choose to take these up, and then change and after alter how they do make, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we have the resolution on, as, that the vote is, all those in favor of providing this resolution, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed for the record? Karen already opposed, Donna Gill opposed. Here we go, all opposed, any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
Darity Downing, Jerel Peker, abstain, recusals, hearing none. Okay, then we will, uh, let's afford, provide the resolution. Okay, so we have a letter to the police commissioner, this, this is what we're asking, what we're asking for, I believe everyone is proceeding their ballot now.
Yeah.
Okay, we take the time to, um, vote, we'll take a minute, two minutes, before we can be finished with the, uh, the votes.
They're fixing it.
They're fixing it, yeah.
So they're fixing it, so we have.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, that's a pleasure, yes.
All right, yeah, I think I'm in.
Okay, uh, so we're gonna continue with the letter to the police commissioner, where we're going to request, oh, we're allowing the committee to work on this letter. And send this out during the summer, um, the request though is to have a town hall forum with the police commissioner this fall. That is what the letter will be focused on, that is what only the, exactly what it wants to, the details of the needs of the precincts, what we said. So the committee will have the opportunity to put forth that letter to the commissioner on behalf of the man in community board ten. Yes.
Is it only, only the town board?
It's not, it's, it's about the entire district, yeah, and it's not about the needs anymore, it's just gonna focus on bringing the commissioner to us. That we can tell her the need of each community, yes, Karen?
Letter, uh, go out to the.
Yeah, the letter will be circulated within the board once the committee complete. And the whole point was just because, you know, the time, we would like to get it out during summer, that hopefully between the months of September and December. We will be able to get the police commissioner to have a forum here, obviously that would be a big deal for us at the community board to host as well, yes. I'm sorry, can we, can we have one voice?
That, present, so that past commissioners have been in our communities.
Okay.
Once they became a commissioner, just for the, just like it's not like a novelty.
Okay.
We thought something that has, hasn't occurred.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the commissioner request to come to, uh, uh, committee board ten, I, I won't say hall, committee board ten. Have you all with your hands?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Recusals, hearing none, the committee's gonna get that letter, but we're gonna get four from them, um. Okay, all right, so, I'll hold on. Please take your moment to vote, online, the ballots are kicking, should be in your inbox again, this ballot, again, will allow you to provide your name.
If they did not access, what happens?
No, they should refresh it, just refresh.
You, you heard that talk, just refre. Yes, refresh it, refresh it, and then untried again. Anyone having any challenges online?
Yeah, this one. Um, here we.
Online, if anyone having any challenges? Uh, Dominique, you saying, yes, you have a challenge?
That's correct.
Okay, just refresh, refresh your, um. Your email.
Can you put the link in the chat?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on there.
Yeah, so Dominique, just refresh your email. Give me a raise, have that work, Dominique. It worked. I think it worked.
You do.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna, I think there's. So there is one more item on the special agenda. Sorry, all of, while you're, you're both getting your vote, there's one more item, the empowerment of the executive committee I asked for, we asked that, um. It's that there's a motion to be made, uh, for the chair and the executive committee to act on behalf of the board during the summer. Uh, while we're not convening, should anything arise and we need to convene, make any decision. Uh, and of course, then that would be brought back to the board on the general board meeting, for ratification, but it's just a, a formal ballot, I'm asking to empower. Vote myself, that, 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 maybe should, something be necessary or, uh, have to take action.
Motion to support.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of it, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Recusals, thank you, um, so, we're gonna wait for the result, that concludes then the special meeting. There's what, the, for the executive committee, anyone's free to say. Um, there's two, two or three things I wanna share with the executive committee, and again, everyone can say. Um, but in that session, I may ask for an executive special. In which I would ask for that that motion is made, that it be permissible for the board to stay too. For the portion now.
Karen, you have to make sure that everyone is voting, if, if it looks like you have, I'll be voting twice, don't do it, okay, do not do. Okay, I, I apologize for all the confusion, but do not vote twice, if you need to option. If you think you've already voted and you're not sure, let's check, if you have a name. Okay, we are missing five, so, online, if you're, if you received it and you're having issues, raise your hand so we can call you and you can vote. If you're in the room and you haven't voted, please let me know and I can come to that, the formal paper ballot.
It, it, it's, it's three papers ballots, right, it's three, because, you know, well, you're, you're able to vote on one? Yes. Yes, yes, we see.
Sorry, I missed one vote, we have the bylaws resolution to make, to actually. To live by our bylaws, okay, which are great, okay, so by the way, this is really just the finale of. This is just a procedural vote right now, that we wanna take, because we've already voted on amendments, we've done, and the committee did amazing work. We have a real good document that was in front of the postal online, without blur on errors and all of the, you know, mistakes. That would really speak to our professionalism as a board, and so thank you again to all of you who served on that committee task force, who did amazing work. Thank you for your, your skill set, your brilliance, your contributions, whatever you did, thank you. All those in favor of the resolution that, that will ratify, especially our bylaws, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, any recusals? Okay, cause that's a record show, I can't really have this thing, okay, any recusals? Hearing none, they are adopted as required majority, and so the majority has, okay? Thank you, so this is, this is great, and so that means within, uh, the next few days, you'll see the new bylaws posted online, okay, as media. I know someone asked me, but we'll wait until this meeting to just get up, okay? With that said, um, I do wanna survey you all, uh, I'm gonna leave, and I know this is bad, this, I'm sorry, no, but I want to ask you. I expect that there's gonna be some important things that come to the board within the next couple of weeks, and would require possibly a special week. And so I know it's hard because it's summertime, and so when I try, when I go with some people, I, uh, here, what the plan is that if we would do either on the twelfth. Um, it's either Saturdays, but look at the time, eleven, on Saturday, the twelfth or the nineteenth, I'm gonna survey you with, like, no, with the show again. And we will also have, right, a brunch, okay, we'll provide that.
Many of them all go, a big reunion on Amsterdam Avenue, uh, when there are too many people coming in now.
Oh, we put in the request as well, for the, the location.
The nineteen, we'll register the request now, if, if that doesn't work.
Trying to, we're gonna pay you, so, how many of you could be, and I'm, I'm only asking for no one, two of us, eleven to one. On July twelfth, if you can make yourself available for a special meeting, um, and, and brunch, and hoping the meeting doesn't take that long. It's more about you eating and talking with everyone, but we will deal with the special order, um, that we expect that we have to deal with. And they're allowed to have real discussion, and so that, it's just, and we, we're talking about one item agenda property, okay? Um, is there, show of hands, how, how many of you could be available from January twelfth? I'm sorry, July, it's the J, it's the J, July, July twelfth, eleven to twelve, I mean, eleven to one, rush. No, no averages, just. Oh, yes, we can, yes, we can do the hot vote, uh, we can do, um, the virtual, just like we do this special meeting. However, we are going to be formed in person to get the business done, meaning, we must have a majority at least, just like this.
Yeah.
In person, and then anyone online can be able to vote, if we, will be unfortunate, so we, we will also actually R S V P. Cause it will be very unfortunate if we convene, we don't wanna wait till we convene and find out we didn't have forum, we don't need convenements, right, cause we can't do anything. So, uh, for that meeting, we'll ask people to R S V P, it also will help us with planning for food. Um, and, and we will need to know that we're gonna have in-person forum, or if you're gonna be merged, okay?
And we probably should point out that in the bylaws that we just ratified, it says that members contribute in person. We've been accommodating with the zoom, but if.
Yes, absolutely, the, so, just to be clear, and then that's what you're saying, the open meetings will have some current, um. Uh, still allowance, but, that's because, really, your attendance is in person. So anytime, it, 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 in accommodation, that's why, for the accommodation, we are supposed to be in person, that's why forum, and, and technically. Um, when you are not in person, you're permitted to vote, but you're absent.
Right.
Just everyone should know that, you're absent, right, so, for the tracking purposes of attendance, you are absent, but permitted to vote very quick, right? Uh, because you've been present, uh, for, but the, it, it's noted by the law, that's weird, yeah, question?
So if you get, um, twenty-six R S V Ps, we will continue, we will proceed with the, um, in-person July twelfth meeting?
Yes, and, we're still, we're still having a virtual auction, but when I say that it's a special meeting, it's a Saturday, it's July, so some, so if someone's willing to be in California and join us. And taking that business, we want to certainly have them, I'm just saying, we're just, uh, uh, for member bar Nelson, that in general, though, people should be very clear, this is supposed to be in person. And that, that, you know, some people are comfortable, um, not being indoors, again, there are some people who are not special, now, there's also special, special situations that they have a certain form for. And we recognize that, whether it be medical or so on so forth, so those people, we're not even talking about, to be clear, I don't want anyone to think we're, they're, we're all aligned, yes?
I will be on a yacht in Miami, so, I'll be Mark Asher, and yes.
I'm gonna join virtual, but it's, it's a special meeting, so, it's a special meeting, so it's not how it gets your attendance. This special year is that we can't do business unless we have, meaning that we still would like, whatever action that takes place in the special meeting. To be the action of the board, we need the, uh, uh, we need to have forum at the meeting, that's all.
Guys couldn't, like, give us a few dates instead of just two?
I do too, oh, that is, that was, uh, the thing is, given the, 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 we're trying to make sure that, this, this is gonna be, uh, relevant to the force currently. And the further, so I was limited to the first, I, I mean, that I, it was a gesture, and I fly and put it out there to entice people. To do something a little bit different, because I didn't know, again, how many people are traveling, we know next week is the fourth of July weekend, I didn't wanna put that, but that was the other option. It just that it was not part of this agenda, cannot be a part of the agenda, cause it wasn't announced before, and, um, and there's still some things that are being worked on.
Tell me, do the date for August?
It's, um, let's just say, our weekdays better, meaning the week of July, cause I, I, this is going to be a little different, is the week of July of the. Those two weeks, are there weekdays that would work? No, the evening, right, the second, if, if, if we only knew, it would always be like the six thirty. No, the evening, right, the second, if we only knew, it would always be like the six thirty.
Here, I have a suggestion.
Yeah.
So the folks Barbara shared that the ninth end is a no-go. So originally, they were proposing two days, the twelfth or the nineteenth. So why not propose the twelfth or the twentieth? Okay, that's too far.
I love that, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make every effort to, as well, I'm gonna put out, uh, we'll, we'll put an RSVP together. And, um, and then we'll vote from there, okay? Do we have, are we ready to report or no? I don't want to, I can't dismiss this meeting until, but I do want to go on to the executive committee for the next thing. Could I, could I have just a little bit of, um, order here? So can we just make sure also we know for the executive committee who's here? Executive, there's no objection, can I talk to that, those items? We're not officially closing the special meeting here until the results are announced, okay? So for the executive committee, I'm just going to state. I was giving my report, I'm not gonna give a group, a long report, we are about to break the summer. You should have received an invitation, um, to next Monday. All board members, we're inviting some community members, we could find a place, though we found, so when we can't find a place, I happen to my school. So we're gonna get the Frederick Douglass Academy in the library, right, it's a very nice place, though, they, they like painted it very beautifully. Um, and we're gonna be at, like, on Monday, where we're gonna be recognized as several board members, community members. Um, and this is a program that started a few years ago, but I was about to celebrate our board members, we're about, what members, you can't report it. Was a long, a longstanding chairperson of the Fox and Revelationary, okay? Um. I also want to give special attention to certain community members and a small business, um, that was recommended, nine little gift shop, um. Stuff that, uh, one that we are, um, Deborah Killiard, who is our senior partner, who's not running anymore, he's been doing, Dave Jennings. And some other individuals who always support our board. Julius Tajadine. Amanda Smith, alright, um, I can't, we can, um. Deborah Lee. And one hundred and twenty-three big Barbara Askett, okay, and a former chair of the board. So some of the, so we just want to really celebrate, and, uh, really, who's been helping us a lot with technology and so on and so forth. This board member has, uh, former board member right now, um, Dawn Richards. Um, so, uh, I'll turn, I'll stop there, uh, okay. Okay, so we need a motion to close, if, if they, if they had to vote, they may not want to vote, but we need a motion to defuse the voting, so that we can.
Motion to close the voting.
Oh, okay, so wait, okay, well, we might need those voters saying, so, and the five people who have to vote it. You know who they are?
I have.
Oh. Are they on, they're here? Okay, we're not.
They're on here.
They're all online?
No, one is in the room.
Okay, if you were, um, is there a reason why people are saying? They may have another reason to vote. If you, um, okay. Uh, board members online, we need you to vote, is there, is there a reason why we can't vote?
So can we, Dr.?
Yeah, I'll contact them.
Okay. We're contacting them, okay?
Yeah.
Um, that's the basic close, you want to have a clear, um, names, right, so, um. So, okay, I'm gonna continue, uh, so that is gonna be on, uh, sat on Monday at six o'clock. There's a flyer that's gonna be around, we're inviting community partners, the board members, and other people who've been around our board. There will be food from six to seven, very small, when I say very brief talking at seven. It's really a time, it's a reception, so it's really a time, yeah.
That's the day, that's the same evening as the hollow, the hollow is just having, um, salary giving that.
I didn't know that, I didn't, I didn't, it was a choice, because honestly too, was that we have a spending deadline. And so, this, this, the fiscal year, right? And so also, um, and because we just had so many things going on with our board, um, I didn't know tomorrow would be, so I just, please come. Is that what writer does? I thought, I thought I said, I said, yeah, and there's a flyer. We already sent, I already sent it, and we have it with our agenda, but I, uh, people didn't read it, that's where it's, you're, you're finding out, we're still. The pile's starting five, we started six, and said, oh, it's not totally over. Oh, and by the way, the first hour of class is eating, you know, but you can come and, you know, and I say, it's really time for us to talk. Uh, we're invited elected officials, they came last two times, and they really enjoyed, it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a. We're not like sitting down for dinner, it's a kind of talk, chat and chew. And, um, and then we will begin at seven with recognizing, um, these special community members and board members. Is that okay? Please, um, and it's, 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 it's the last day of the month, I, I wanted to get him before July first, basically, because also the summer, and I just felt like. June third, it was like, that's it, so I said. Um, we're gonna go, okay? The flyer is here, alright, um. So, next, okay, for our executive committee, I have, oh. Executive members, uh, this is really for, I guess, anyone who's here, but I was sharing with the executive committee members. I've been talking about the whole proposal, I'm gonna ask that we vote on it, I'm giving it to you so that. Executive committee members could, um, what's the word? If they have any questions, can think about it, but we're using our executive committee in August. We usually have August EC meeting for the September, before the September meeting. I would like to make, have the EC vote on this, and then, um, uh, with order, and then we bring it to general court. The proposal is for a faith-based, uh, group that we've been talking about, and I know I've also, that I have probably two at that time, but I wanted to get this out, because. I've been getting pressured as well, I have been promised this would happen, and I had to work on, um, getting feedback from. And clergy members in the community, but I hadn't gotten a little feedback, and we hadn't coordinated, so. Um, this is to start like a task force, um. A faith-based initiative, because faith-based is in, in our community, uh, we've been having that. Um, and what I'm gonna ask EC is this, you know, these are just the reasoning, uh, the group that we can have, just like I see your task force. Where we can gather clergy members, and when I say clergy, I'm saying, uh, across the board, e- everything nomination, everything. Um, and kind of start to coordinate strategies and work together on different initiatives, and our former board member, um, pastor Ronald. I asked to really help lead and help with that, and that was one of the things before she, um, uh, when she, before she stepped off the board. She asked me, will you still have a part of this group? And kind of so that we can help advise and give, give advice to the community board, and I said, that was something I thought we should do, as. We currently have no clergy members on the board, and we used to have, when I, you know, there was always clergy member on our community for ten, for whatever, the history, and even when I got on. There were several, um, clergy members, so, um, and I don't know, maybe there could be someone, I don't know, actually, I was. Yeah, Nicky Powell, um, yeah, um, that's true, and Nicky Powell, certainly one of this, one of this task board. Um, but just a, isn't, is, I, I really outlined that, and I wanted to keep back, but, so you can feel free to email me all the summer, I'm not really saying. And, uh, what I'm asking EC to be prepared to vote on it in August.
Well, we need to be careful about crossing lines with, um, religion and the state.
Absolutely.
And the city, um, it may not be, uh, this may not be a clean cut. From my overview of it, because, because we're talking about equity and inclusion, but we don't make those decisions. Um, so I want us to be clear before we.
So, you know, I, I, I actually, I, I was very, I understand, uh, you may do, may do, and then get back to me and let me know if you think it or not. Because the, the, the goals are pretty outlined, and it's not necessarily in any way to infringe upon or, um, this is not a religious group. It's, it's, but it's working with people of faith to help address community concerns, it's really not, the goal would not be to, um, in any way.
No, I'm just saying, we ended a church with the public, and statements were made, um, that kind of crossed the line a little bit, because we were in the church. And they said, I'm gonna say first, but they've been individual, but there were certain statements that were made in support of. Right, and we need to be careful, um, and if the new board members or old board members are not aware of that, I'm, I'm making us aware of that right now. Because we represent the community, and it may be atheist in the community, um, that want to participate without any specification for any religion. But there is a group that we have, like, in CPR, you should have a clergy and something, I don't know if the meeting, but, um, find out, you know. People need.
I'm sorry, yeah, okay, yeah. Yep, they reached out to me.
And, and not, and not just come off, and do more, and this is what we do with the religion. The different religion, inter-religion, and discuss these issues. Because, you know, you don't have to be in a church. To worry about racism and, and equality and things like that, and, and moral issues.
I'm just referencing the charter, so, because in the charter, it specifies what community would do under twenty-seven hundred, and what, what roles we take. Could we, if, if any question about mine was this, check the chart, because it definitely is.
So, let, let me just, just, just let me be, like, this, this, I, I've kind of, this is not a religious group, this is one that we're building connections and ties. And they're part of our community, and just like we have any interest, like, we're doing services. That is a part, the faith-based community is a part of our community as well, and so it's about the relationship, in no way are we trying to promote a religious, uh, agenda. No way, you know, and it's about also getting advisory and saying, how can we collaborate more? It's really about what I, what I, and I'll be honest, what I, what I talked about was increasing our presence at the community board outside, so how do we do that? One is through the faith-based community, I mean, and that's, they, I feel like to deny or ignore it, that's so huge on community. Like, you know, that's, so, and also, yes, we also had LGBTQIA task force, which we're trying to also get going to. So these are just groups, and it's not about in any way, but it's also just kind of hearing from them, just, I would like to hear their concerns, and that's what the task force would allow us to do. Here, what, because we don't have any, you know, uh, and so it really, not, it's for listening purposes, and kind of saying, how can we collaborate? Maybe we're something we can do around public safety, having forums and things of that nature, yes, by preference.
Chair, just, just so we agree, compliance with the understanding on bylaws. Specific, we're trying bylaws, um, task force for, for not really designed to be here for two of you.
Right.
These task forces that have specific time, timeframes, and so, so we have a lot of task forces, uh, on this community board, this came up in. The, the, the bylaws committee, the two, two cycles, one cycle, so, it's not a price, we talked about this, our cycle as well. We need to, need to make these task forces more, um, maybe some community board, and some set in that process as task force. Because they've been operating, you know, I've been on this board for, for this, 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 these task forces are still operating, we need to. Maybe make a recommendation to chair and executive committee of maybe these task forces can do, come before us, that they can opt, become official, um, subcommittee organization, it's obviously a, a community board.
Yeah, maybe a steering committee, because what it basically says is community boards can form task forces to address local issues. Often review approval of the board chairperson and steering committees. So we probably should just have, start with a steering committee to have a discussion before we go into saying we're gonna.
Our steering committee is executive committee.
Right.
Yeah.
My point is, uh, we're about to find that.
No, I didn't, no, I understand your point, I think for me, the, the, starting with the task force, kind of could help us understand and see what direction we want to go in. As far as those big communities that have never really had task force about it. Uh, I think we need to examine the senior task force, which is constantly ongoing, maybe making that some type of committee rather than, um, a task force. Because that's not, that's not work that's ever gonna kind of expire, or, uh, will, you know, I think that, that's something we want to continuously focus on, and so that might be the direction we go with that. Uh, oh, sorry, um, um, sorry.
Uh, just a, a reminder that task force, community staff, we have very small staff, so just in consideration that would be expanded things, how will we support it?
Thank you, uh, you have a comment too? No, okay, sorry.
First of all, one last thought, we, as a, we, we need to, what are we trying to learn from this specific task force, and what, what, what are the key questions? That we want to learn from the task force, from, even, we all, we all try to learn.
Okay, thank you, no, so, one second, I think we'll pick up, uh, during the EC meeting in August, um, and I will actually reach out to some of you just to get that, more advisory as to how these structures moving forward. Um. That kind of concludes what I wanted to share with you all. Um, I still, actually, so I was saying to you all that I was putting a copy of the goal for any secondary session discussion, that is only limited to the executive committee, I'm sorry, that will not be. Uh, that will not be, it would be only left to those who represent a committee, if the chair is not here, or the chair of a committee would be the ones, but that's gonna have to wait until we have this, and hold out the, um. The special meeting. They're voting, huh? They're clear.
So, um, like, it's still, we should have, we're becoming, it's a big, that not being, it was that not being, it was like, they're having a non-remembering, being a part of, that there's, you understand?
Well, we, we haven't even got, we're not there, but it's also public members, so.
Okay, and also, that's, that's around.
It's, uh, we, we have to just initiate, we have to, actually, that's right, I'm gonna do that in the summer.
I know. Board member, can't you with online logs power, and paid in terms of.
Okay, just, we do have a special, here goes something, we just have a special announcement, um, because this is a, that'd be an announcement. So if we could, this is listed at the district needs for, for board, which I said, because we wasn't, we could do that under those agenda items, so if you, your announcement?
Yeah, just, uh, quickly. Mike, not, the people here are phone, they're here, um, sorry. Just quickly, both, I heard three candidates talking about reports of district needs, and that gave me a smile, because it is clearly one of the most important balls we have to board, at board members. The link for the district needs survey is available, we will receive it shortly in the mail, and we ask that when you receive it, you fill it out. Not enough district to fill it out, I need you to share with friends, family, and neighbors. Uh, we really want to have a goal of having the highest number of surveys, um, that, that are had, and so we, we can do that this summer. Because in September, when we come back, we'll have about thirty days to produce this report. Which is the, just the statement of district needs, every board member that is back in February, I'm gonna ask you to put it on your summer meeting list. It is an incredible resource of information, one of the questions for you, do you guys know how many people live in Central Orange? I'm not gonna tell you, but it's in the report. Uh, also, we would love to have people table with us this summer, there are lots of events that happened in Harlem, uh, one hundred and sixteen street, uh, the Harlem African Theater Parade, there are lots of events. Uh, also, we would love to have people table with us this summer, there are lots of events that happened in Harlem, uh, one hundred and sixteenth street, uh, the Harlem, I think they're parade, there are lots of events. I have tabled with Ivy Care, then during the summer, we need volunteers, if you are interested in tabling, so that we can get the surveys done, please call central office, and tell them you give them your names, we will then send out a list of what those events are, and ask for you to, since we're with us, we promise one of these to give away, you know, like maybe pencil for holders or something, but we'll have something to do with the way we need you to do it. So, uh, does it get anything planned?
You could share.
Oh, I just wanted to ask this, as a senior's, uh, resolution.
Yes, that will be to you tomorrow, I'm sorry that I didn't get it to you, it is, it's done, but I just need some of you to, for sure.
Thank you all for your patience, um, we have the, uh, the votes, um, for everyone, I can leave them out, I repeat. This one of the winner? Okay, cause I do have a tally, so everyone will know how many votes are in it, so, just so you know, there's thirty-seven, there was forty ballots to now, we got thirty-seven responses, three people did not respond, okay? So we're asking for those three people, and we don't, we do know who those folks are. Um, and I can just read out the, the votes, what the names, and, okay, so, um, yeah, Mitchell, we see fourteen votes. Alright, so just for the record, um, the honorable Maurice Franklin received seven votes, the Honorable Sidney Booker received three votes, the honorable, uh, the now received ten votes, and the honorable Karen Waring received three votes. Um, and for the opposite of this event, the honorable Shorty Twiakoff, he's received nineteen votes, and for, and, she was, uh, maybe very, received eight votes.
So, if we can have a motion to call the special meeting. Oh, okay, okay, that means it's called the executive committee, I need you to restate, uh, anyone's restate, but we are probably gonna do an executive session, okay? Uh, for the executive committee meetings, uh, I gave my report in some ways, um, we have the district manager's report, that's gonna be brief, very, very. I'll need a recount. If everybody just quietly. Good night. Good night.
Good night, good night.
Oh, by the way, uh, those officers take effect immediately, they are fulfilling the new terms, so that's, you know, that's immediately, okay?
Congratulations, congratulations.
We gotta just quickly go.
Immediately.
Uh, Dominic, you were speaking on. Good night, thank you, I'm good, actually, I know, and I, I didn't check in with him, when I mentioned, I'm sorry. Oh, I was gonna text him.
It's trash.
That's like.
Some requests.
I mean, boy, I would want you to, but I stand.
I do not belong to one, are you?
Oh, she's promoted, and you have that stuff, okay, we're gonna start with the district manager's report for two minutes, I'm timing. Everyone?
I'll just be brief, um, one, there was just really great conversations of budget and government committee, and I really look forward to this process that Vice Chair Palmer, um, discussed earlier, um, in terms of what those discussions will look like over the summer, and what those best practices, and also conversations that will come out of each of your all's committees, um, so that we can, um, really submit a updated and, um, robust response to the city, and also get ahead and in front of our legislative officials, um, and that's also something that, um, our, our current Cornell interns are, we're also listening in on, and so they will also be working along with that, and give me that in support, um, for this next month. Um, also, today is the last day of the civic engagement commission, um, citywide industry budget process, so if you have not voted, you can show that on the screen at the end, um, but there's a number of initiatives that they put forward concerning youth, food access, um, uh, skilled buildings, such as finances and everything like that, um, so again, you have a tilted day, and this will be a project that will, um, be extended throughout the entire borough, um, and we'll be getting some S Y P interns, so I'm looking forward to that, and, um, hopefully, we won't have too much of a violence summer, but I think in terms of the conversation that we were discussing earlier, in terms of how we can also have conversations in terms of how to, um, get ahead of some of, uh, the violence that we know about during summer. Um, and also, wait, one more is, um, this mayoral, uh, charter commissioner mission will be having its final public hearing, um, the city councils kind of co-part of that happened last week Monday, that was the same day as the budget and government committee, uh, meeting, um, that was of the, uh, city of, uh, city of New York, the museum of the city of New York, in East Harlem, this will be right here in our district at the Schaumburg on July seventh, um, again, the mayor is looking at revising the charter as a whole, with a special interest of, um, looking at the, um, land use, uh, and newer portion of the charter, and that was my report.
Okay, I was, uh, we did have a place for the committees to make their reports, because it wasn't supposed to be the last thing, um, I know that, oh, yeah, district needs has one major competence report, so we're gonna allow them, because that's where we're going, we're, you know, very important, so, uh, is there any other that, like, we must hear this information, needs to be shared?
Uh, okay, I did wanna talk about the district needs of the committee chairs, because there's a different strategy there, we're asking, the budget and the governor, uh, committee are asking that the standing committee chairs and task force each develop a public engagement strategy for outreach to, uh, members of the community, one way to do that is to look at your guests, your listener presenters, and people who showed up at your committee meetings, I will do this past session, and personally send an outreach to them to fill out, um, the, the survey. Um, in addition to that, we did mention the volunteers, did you outreach to each member of your committee? We've had a hard time getting board members to fill out these surveys, um, so we hope that if they hear it from you as a committee chair, that they will respond and fill it out. There's fifty board members, that should be an easy one, you didn't have to write the fee, so if you can reach out to your committee members, that would be really, really helpful. Last but certainly not least, we really, really wanna talk about a social media campaign, um, sort of a tagline or a graphic that basically says to folks in the community, we need to hear your needs, let us know, we're listening. Not sure what it is, but if there's anybody who has any skill, or you know somebody who could do some promoting for us, please give us a call and let us know, okay?
Just, uh, for parts and parts, created a district needs, uh, survey, we got chair that will be, and so we do have a dissemination strategy, so, that our district needs survey, I should have gone out, um, on Friday, and we asked our district managers to, that, um, our survey out, um, three times a month, first, and then third, and then we will have, hopefully have enough data collected, so that we will, that, you know, that's sort of a robust information to follow up. Is if we just, these are going to be part of the, is this, to start.
Thank you, and I hope you share this best practice with other committee chairs, uh, I know that Donna, I mentioned to you guys that Don Gill actually took surveys out to seniors, senior centers, and had seniors fill them out, that's another strategy, so please, if you've got a best practice, you wanna hear that as well, please share it with us.
Okay, so, the next, the third committee that's going to report, okay, um, I'm gonna do, is the, the first one here, um, in order to do that, I'm gonna need to go into an executive session. Uh, there are chairs and vice chairs here, and then we say that there is chair, I know there's one online, if, what we have here is chairs and vice chairs, and so make the motion to allow the executive session to permit those who are here to be permitted, and we can approve that motion, then we'll continue with the group, or, or, still stop recording, we're at next step, like, you know, all those things don't have to do with that motion, it's coming with it. With permitting chairs and vice chairs.
Permitting chairs and vice chairs and coming home, members that are not, um.
Okay.
Second.
Second, the properly moved to second, now we're going to executive session, allowing only the chairs and vice chairs that are currently here and online, be permitted that being.
And officers.
And officers, yes, that is, yeah, probably, all those in favor, like, you know, my hand, I? Any opposed? Okay, uh, so we will do that, so with that meeting, we're going to go into an executive session, be reporting, I don't know who that is, we're gonna follow all procedures, and then, basically, the meeting is ending, so, okay.
There's some board members that need to be, under, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay, board members, uh, we're going to start moving you out, we're going into an executive session, who, if you're not a committee chair or vice chair, we're, uh, we're moving you, okay? Or you can turn, or you can, or you can, uh, uh, sign up. And you want to, you, you sign up, okay?